Negotiated uh negotiators related to Teamsters and there's no reportable action at this time.
Thank you um public comment if you wish to address the city council concerning any item within the city council's jurisdiction please raise your hand. And be acknowledged by the mayor at that time states your name and address for the record the rare the mayor reserves a right to place a time limit of three minutes. On each person's presentation are there any public comments for tonight sir if you could please step up to the podium.
Uh how are you doing my name is David Graham I live at six oh nine North C Street uh excuse me if I'm I'm a little nervous being up here I'm not a big public speaker. But I had some problems I didn't get addressed the last time about a month ago that I was here one of the problems is Duggan's construction company. Uh we never uh we're supposed to get a hold of somebody from the city I've been contacted city officials I leaving my number and everything and I have not gotten any contact from them. Um and what the problem is is these people uh have been starting work. At four o'clock in the morning five o'clock in the morning and I never did get an answer as to when these people can start working I've called the poor police department I don't know how many times. And normally I get the same thing it's well we don't know if they can start because the city council might have given them permission on this. Um so I'm trying to bring this up uh and see if we can get an answer because like I said I've already called departments. Left my phone left messages I have not gotten a return in more than a month about this. Uh other problems that we've been having is what is enough notice cause do these people have to give us notice when they're doing things around our properties. Because it used to be that um uh I don't know if you ever been down twelfth street by laboratory. There's these three really nice houses those houses were bought. Uh the property there was a uh pasture it was bought by Mister old man Duggans he ended up and built some houses. But before he could do that he had to give us notice notification that they were gonna split the lot up into three lots. Uh from what I know is we have not gotten any kind of notification from the property owner Doug against construction except that they were gonna fence in our yard and put cameras in. Uh when the original project started we never got a notice that. Uh we were gonna you know this was happening the apartments were happening. I actually got a notice from somebody and went out in the summer and I went walking around and telling everybody hey did you know about these apartments going up did you know about these apartments going up. So I'm out there in the summer doing this um what is and the question is what is enough notice. Do are we supposed to get notice from these people about what they're doing cause I've been hearing things that the apartments the amount of apartments are going up. Cause it it was supposed to be eighty apartments behind my house or behind our six oh nine property six six hundred properties. Uh where can I get information about this because like I said I haven't been able to get a hold of anybody to give me information about any of this kind of stuff. Uh I heard that there's gonna be more apartments going up in that area cause they bought the property across fifteenth street. So I'm hearing that there's apartments going up over there so um my question is where do I get information from the city like I said I've called the city about complaints about. The time these guys are getting started at work and I've also tried to find out information about this you know. What is enough notice because we've never gotten any notice or at least I've never gotten any notice notification. That they're doing these things like when thirteenth street and fourteenth street.
Sir your three minutes are up.
Uh huh well who do I need to talk to or who can I talk to about.
Sir uh uh our city manager office and our attorney actually gave you a phone call the day after the city council meeting last time and you chose to not call back.
No I did call them no no I called I called them back on my phone was messed up I I had to like I said I'm blind. And somebody fixed what the problem was on the phone I called him on the Tuesday after because I think he called me on Thursday.
Sir he'll get back to you this week.
Uh huh.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do we have any other public comments for tonight. Seeing none we'll move on to special presentations the introduction of two new police officers with chief crank Shaw.
Good evening Madam Mayor city council staff members of the public. I take great pleasure in introducing two of uh Imperials new police officers uh directly to the right of me is Andrea Chaboga. Andrea is uh came on in June uh middle of June she was uh born and raised in Ecuador. Moved her way over to the East Coast Jersey and have a good football team so they came out to the West Coast. And uh she is now a a residence of Imperial and we are glad to have her. Uh just on the other side is uh Emily Bustamante she just recently was hired a couple weeks ago. Uh I believe just a week ago or two weeks ago and she is a lifelong uh residence of Imperial. She is a tiger and she's now a Imperial police officer so I like to take this opportunity to introduce him to you thank you.
Welcome ladies.
Good evening um Officer Chivoga I'm very happy to be part of this community and to serve this community thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Hello I'm Officer Bustamante and I wanna thank you guys for this opportunity to be able to take care of this community I grew up here I. Went to school here so thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you officers and I look forward to you both growing your career with Imperial Police Department. Uh moving A item A two laboratory widening project um presentation by Carla Benales uh Jesus Vegas and with community development department.
Evening city council members uh my name is Carla Benales and I will be presenting the laboratory road widening project for you all. The laboratory road widening project from Aitken Boulevard to Treschel Road bid number twenty twenty two dash oh four presented to you by the community development department. The area improved and benefits the project location is laboratory road from Aitken Boulevard to Treschel Road. The benefits are transportation health safety and community. The road improvements alleviated traffic congestion and ease commute times this has stimulated the economy and encouraged out of towners to visit the beautiful city of Imperial. Abatement of air pollution was achieved by reducing particles suspended in the air coming from the deteriorated road surface. Which are known to cause chronic acute respiratory diseases such as asthma. Streetlights have ensured the laboratory road as well it increased visibility has reduced traffic accidents crime and other dangers. And sidewalks are providing safe transportation options to the community and promoting walking as an option as well as continuing to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. For the sources of funding we did um we did use LTA measure deep funds SB one road maintenance repairs act and the circulation funds. For the contractor for the construction contractor we had a competitive bid process. And out of five prospective bidders road robe engineering Inc was selected the contract was awarded on July twentieth twenty twenty two. And the investment amount was two million fifty five thousand five hundred ninety eight and eighty cents with a twenty five percent contingency. Of a total amount of five hundred thirteen eight hundred ninety nine and thirteen cents. The final contract amount was two million five hundred sixty nine thousand four hundred ninety seven dollars and ninety three cents. Which was um a total amount of four hundred one four hundred and one thousand four hundred ninety nine dollars and seventy three cents over the original amount. For time and materials the additional work included more sidewalks curbing gutters cross gutters street lights. And an increase in project benefits to the residents as well as unforeseen time and materials. In regards to labor compliance out of two prospective bidders labor compliance consultants of Southern California was selected. They were selected on August third twenty twenty two and the investment amount was six thousand dollars. The final contract amount was a total of seven thousand dollars two hundred eighty two dollars and fifty cents which was over the amount one thousand two hundred eighty two and fifty cents. For processing and documentation this additional time was spent processing documentation for the duration of the contract. So here you can see the previously existing conditions there were only four streetlights at the southerly side of the brewery road. There were no storm drains between Aitken Boulevard and Treshill Road no sidewalks on the east side of the brewery. The asphalt on the brewery road was in desperate need of repre- of reconstruction the roads were narrow heavy traffic and deteriorated signage signing striping sorry. So a challenging component was temporary traffic control and mobilization this impacted both the city of Imperial and the city of El Centro. We had a full road closure and it was set up by the contractor including changing messaging board boards signage barricades and construction codes for safety. This remained throughout the duration of the project the staging areas were set up in preparation of the project you can see here in the pictures. This equipment and machinery was brought onto the project site to ensure efficiency. The next aspect of the project was the removal of native material existing roadway was removed and replaced with new pavement structure. Of four inches of AC pavement over eighteen inches of class two base so previously laboratory road did not have class two base. But this this portion class two base does provide strength and stability resulting resulting in roadway longevity. Here in these videos we can see um the grinding so the can the contractor used milling asphalt machinery to grind and remove the existing asphalt pavement. And then the grindings were returned to the city and delivered as requested. In this portion we can see the underground the blue piping you can actually see is the twelve inch storm drain system. And then the bottom the bottom part is the twelve inch PVC water main the storm drain is the black and then the water is the blue. Here we can see the construction of the new sidewalks um as previously stated there were no sidewalks before. Um so this was part of the improvements we can see here in the video there's some activities going on simultaneously. And then on the video on the right we can see where it's already completed. Here we have the installation of an inch eighteen inch thick layer of class two base. You can see here a few activities were being performed as well the class two base prep concrete improvements including sidewalks curbing gutter and driveway approach. Here in these images we can depict the paving along laboratory this was completed in two days time working from Aitken to Treschel. And we can also see here the intersection of Aitken and laboratory. For striping streetlights and the traffic signal they did increase visibility and reduce traffic related accidents the traffic signal light was relocated to accommodate for the additional lanes. Here we have a before and after so now we can see the side by side before and after the improvements and again this included. The widening of the roadway relocation of utilities traffic signal new sidewalks storm drain system and water line water line system. Curbing gutter traffic signal um the upgrading the existing traffic signal ADA curb ramps reconstruction of the asphalt and crosswalk. These images of the laboratory white of the laboratory road at night show the streetlights installed and energized. We can see them illuminating the stretch of road nicely providing an increased visibility for drivers and pedestrians as well as promoting overall safety to all. Here we have the laboratory road road at night in this video we can see firsthand the benefit of widening the road. Providing space for traffic and safety vehicles alike. So this is our team my project manager Jesus Villegas and myself. Um you can connect with us by scanning our QR code here leading us leading you directly to our page. Um going to the city of Imperial website Facebook Instagram or by calling our office directly. And if you have any questions otherwise thank you.
Oh I'm do I have any questions from the council.
Somebody who travels that road probably. I don't know maybe thirty times in a week I greatly appreciate it so great job guys and to the city staff thank you. I know it looks like it was a quick job in those videos but we know it was a. Not super long project but quite a long project I know the um rain also kind of delayed it a bit right in those storms that you guys had or we had.
Yes that was right at the initial um the initial time of the project when we were first starting out for Hurricane K it did delay us a little bit.
It's good to see this project um come finally be completed and signed off with the lights being energized I know. This project was one that had you know stops in the road along the way between encroachment permits to everything so. I appreciate it and it looks really great.
Thank you.
Moving on to item B consent agenda all items appearing under consent agenda will be acted upon by the city council with one motion without discussion should any council member or. Should any council member or person request that any item be considered separately, that item will be taken up at the time as determined by the mayor. Do we have a motion for the consent agenda? I have a motion by Mendoza and a second by Obeso Martinez. Please vote. Motion carries four zero. Onto s- item C, action items. C one, approval of agreement between the City of Imperial and Citizen Serve for Business License Services for the term of one year in the annual amount of twenty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars with Alejandro Estrada.
That's me. Um, um, Madam Mayor, um, council members, in collaboration with the Finance Department, we are presenting, uh, tonight for your consideration and potential approval, the implementation of the new Citizen Serve Business License software in the amount, um, twenty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. With this, um, software, we are, uh, we want to increase efficiency of our business license procedures and decrease paperwork, as well as retire our current business license that we built in-house kind of fifteen years ago. Um, this item is part of the twenty-three, twenty-two, uh, IT budget, and we receive two quotes from vendors, uh, but we already are making business with, uh, Citizen Serve. They're providing service to the Community Development, um, Department. So our, our recommendation is go with, with them. Um, the initial, the twenty-two thousand would be the, the annual fee plus the implementation. Then next year, we'll be adding, uh, nine thousand dollars to our budget to cover the renewal. And I will stop for any question that you might have.
Does anybody have any questions? I look really forward to this, because business licenses are something that I feel like we've been really behind on, modernizing, so.
Yes, I, I think for, from the IT standpoint, uh, uh, approaching those, um, projects is very important as well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And this should speed up the time that it takes to process a business license, correct?
Absolutely. Um, we have some demos, and although, um, the Finance Department is gonna, is gonna be the one leading the project, because they are the ones in charge of the final, uh, business license, um, we're gonna be helping in implementation.
Uh, future, if so, is there like a how-to video when, or s- later on, when somebody does want to use this application to apply?
The, the is very use-friendly. Um, we went through a demo, and one of the ma- um, main things of this, uh, implementation of this program is the, is gonna allow finance to prepare the request of business license with the information submitted at that moment. So if you want to apply for something, you need to provide the information at the time that you're applying. If you don't have it, you can continue to submit your application. Um, other questions? I don't know, Diana, if you're gonna.
Of a motion?
Motion.
Of a motion by Obeso Martinez and a second by Mendoza, please vote. Motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
Item C two, discuss, approve, disapprove the purchase of budgeted equipment thermoplastic trailer with Isaiah Gonzalez.
Madam Mayor Council, we're seeking approval to purchase a Pro Meltzer trailer. The current process, it takes about an hour to cook three hundred pounds. The current, or the proposal will come with, uh, two seven-hundred gallon, or seven-hundred-pound tanks of white and yellow, so we can technically cook both at the same time, and it comes with, uh, an additional applicator that we currently use. That will allow us to, uh, do white and yellow at the same time, and we won't have any downtime. Because while we're applicating, we'll be throwing more bags into cook, so while it takes about maybe thirty minutes to get rid of a tank, and it takes, you already have three hundred and fifty gallons cooking and adding to the other, so it'll help. So we're seeking approval for purchase, and I stand for any questions you may have.
Have any question?
I'll make a mo- motion to approve.
Of a motion by Tucker and a second by Mendoza, please vote. Motion carries four zero. Item C three, discuss, approve, disapprove the purchase of budgeted equipment, Salco Mini Asphalt Paver with Isaiah Gonzalez.
And a budgeted item for this fiscal year, some mini paver. We currently do everything manually by hand, dump it into the hole, move it around the rake, and not as big quantity as we like to. This will enable us to do it faster and a lot more quantity of material, so seeking approval, and I'll stand for any questions you may have.
Only a dumb question. If you guys do it by hand right now with this machine, is it a machine?
No, right now we just do it with rakes and
No, 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 but if you get this machine, how, like, what does it cover? How much of a space or a whole?
Seventy-two inches wide, and then it's, as long as we have material continuous.
Awesome.
I'll make that motion to approve, because our roads need all the help they can get.
That's right.
That's not saying anything bad about you guys. We just gotta get the equipment.
Everybody's life easier.
I like to make you guys more efficient. I have a motion by Tucker and a second by Obeso Martinez, please vote. Motion carries four zero. Item C four, approval of renewed memorandum of understanding between Imperial County Sheriff's Office and Imperial Police Department with Police Chief Michael Crenshaw.
Good evening, Madam Mayor Council. Uh, you have the backup for this MOU. We did do a, uh, a process for bids, uh, for the, we only have four piece apps here, which are dispatch, um, centers here in the valley. And, uh, although, uh, El Centro made a very attractive, uh, bid, based on the logistics and some of the, uh, the transition cost, we found it better to, uh, to remain. Uh, we've already done our first three-to-four-year stint with them, and, uh, we're looking to get approval for another three years.
Questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Of a motion by Tucker and a second by Mendoza, please vote. Motion carries four zero. Item C five, approval of new memor- memorandum of understanding between Police Safety Cadet Program and Imperial Police Department, again with Chief Crenshaw.
Thank you. Uh, currently, we're, as I've, uh, mentioned prior, we're looking to reboot our, uh, youth outreach program. We, um, looked at what some of the in, uh, process, the public, uh, yeah, the, the cadet program that we have, uh, found is being used by, uh, multiple police agencies around the, the United States, uh, with a great, uh, high percentage of success with bringing, uh, young, uh, youth into the law enforcement, gaining them the training, and it, they're starting to see on the back end that it's actually producing, uh, young, uh, men and women in police or in law enforcement, so. We're very excited to bring this. We're looking to bring twenty to twenty-five cadets on. Uh, in the backup, you've already saw that we have a manual ready to go, and we have our, uh, Officer Fiero will be the lead mentor, and we'll have several volunteers as, uh, that will be assisting her during the, their, their initial training, which will be an academy, and then, uh, the, uh, the, the routine annual training that, that comes with it. In regards to the MOU, um, it's a very minimal cost, and they carry all the insurance burden, and it, it, uh, it allows us to, uh, to get these cadets without having to have any cost burden to them, so it allows us to open it up, uh, quite a bit. Um, so I'll stand for any questions that you have. You should have all the backup on.
Questions or motion?
Um, for those who might not have read the, um, online, um, what ages are you looking for for the cadet program? What, what's it available? What age group?
I believe it is, uh, fourteen to, uh, I think it was to eighteen. Uh, and then there is another program that we can kick in after that. Um, typically, it is keeping them within that, uh, that age group, kind of keeping them in their same. But then when they, uh, when they come out, then we can bring them in as volunteers, and then encourage for the reserve program, which we're also rebooting, uh, as well.
Oh, they're gonna do ride-alongs, Explorer program, and?
Yes, uh, both the, uh, uh, Border Patrol has this program, El Centro has this program, the Sheriff's Department now went to this program. It, it's very successful, and we're excited to give it a shot, so.
I'm excited to see this come back. Uh, my brother was an explorer back in the day, and now he's been a police officer for about twelve, thirteen years now, so I look forward to seeing this.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion by Obeso Martinez and a second by Tucker, please vote. Motion carries four zero. Moving on to item C six, Monterey Park Subdivision Number Two, Unit Three B, Vista Del Valle authorized partial reconvenance to Jupiter Ventures One LP with Athone Mora.
Um, good evening, Madam Mayor, uh, for this item, and then next to, I'll have Carla Benales from, from our staff presenting this, these items.
We are seeking, um, the authorization of partial reconvenance of Jupiter Ventures ILP for phases fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, and fifty-seven. Um, some background and summary you have in front of you. Um, city staff has been conducting regular field inspections during the reconstruction process of both the off-site street improvements and houses for all phases fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, and fifty-seven of Monterey Park Subdivision Number Two, Unit Three B, uh, otherwise known as Vista Del Valle. At this time, that portion of the improvements were found to be completed, and now the developer is requesting partial reconvenance of the above-mentioned lots, of the above-referenced lots. You can see exhibit one as attached herewith for details, um, and there is no fiscal impact.
Have any questions or a motion from the council?
I'll make a, make a motion to approve.
I have a motion by Tucker and a second by Mendoza, please vote. Motion carries four zero. Item C seven, Monterey Park Subdivision Number Two, Unit Four B, authorized substitution of trustee in full reconvenance to Jupiter Ventures LP with Ms. Benales.
Thank you. Um, staff recommends approval and acceptance of off-site street improvements of Monterey Park Subdivision Number Two, Unit Four B. Um, this is for phases thirty-seven through forty-two, forty-three through forty-eight, and phase thirty-six, uh, with the, with the specified lots. Lots thirty-f- three fifty-six to three ninety-three, four eighteen and four fifty-five, and five fifty, five seventy-six to five eighty-three. Staff recommends authorization and substitution of trustee in full reconvenance to Jupiter Ventures ILP. There is no fiscal impact, and some background, city staff has conducted regular field inspections during the construction of off-site street improvements for the subject project, and a final walk was completed. At this time, the improvements were found to be completed. You can see exhibit A attached herewith for details, and the developer is requesting substitution of trustee in full reconvenance.
Motion or any questions?
I'll second, and is that for both ac- actions? Yes.
I have a motion by Obeso Martinez and a second by Tucker, please vote. Motion carries four zero. Final action item, C eight, laboratory widening project from Aitton Boulevard to Treschel Road, bid number two thousand twenty-two dash zero four with Ms. Benales.
So staff recommends city council accept the work completed, authorizing city clerk to file a notice of completion in the Imperial County Clerk Recorder's Office. There is no fiscal impact. Um, some background and summary, Community Development Department was directed by city council to conduct a competitive bid process for the construction of laboratory widening road project from Aitton Boulevard to Treschel Road, which consisted of curbing gutters, driveways, sidewalks, ADA ramps, asphalt paving, streetlights, thermoplastic striping, water main pipe, catch basins, and storm drain pipelines. An individual contract was awarded to Rove Inc. through the bid process in the amount of two million fifty-five hundred, fifty-five thousand five hundred ninety-eight and eighty cents per Agenda Item F three, um, in city council meeting, um, held on seven twenty, twenty twenty-two. Due to potential unknown conditions, city council authorized a twenty-five percent contingency, um, that's equal to five hundred and thirteen thousand eight hundred ninety-nine and seventy cents. Minor changes to the scope of work were made due to additional sidewalks, curbing gutters, cross gutters, streetlights were added to increase project benefits to the residents and other unforeseen time and materials. The amount expended included a set amount of two million four hundred fifty-seven thousand nine ninety-eight and fifty-three cents. This is a hundred and twelve thousand three hundred ninety-nine dollars and forty cents lower than the authorized amount. The final contract amount was authorized by city council per Agenda Item G two at city council meeting held on June twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. The construction work has been completed as of March thirtieth, with the exception of the energizing of the streetlights, the nine streetlights. These were energized by IAD on June fourteenth, and you can see exhibit one herewith for details.
Questions or a motion from the council? Of a motion by Mendoza and a second by Obeso Martinez, please vote. Motion carries three-one, one-upstain bean council member Tucker. Moving on, item D, reports. Item D one, department reports.
It's good evening, uh, Madam Mayor, city council members, city manager, members of the staff. I'm here to introduce our new fire chief. Uh, the board supervisors, uh, appointed the fi- chief, Fire Chief David Lancer on Tuesday. Um, the, that's when the official penning happening, although his onboarding happened on Monday. Uh, this is his third day on, on the job. Uh, we're very excited, uh, to have him on board. He comes with us with a lot of experience, and, uh, we hope that, uh, he, though, to continue to provide a great service to the great city of Imperial. So for that, I'll turn over to Chief Lancer.
Thank you, chief. I think you just called me old. Yeah, so I have a history in Imperial County. Um, I, uh, went to school in El Centro Elementary, Wilson Junior High, Central Union, uh, IVC, uh, moved to Holtville, worked for City of Holtville as a firefighter, uh, then hired in Callexco as a firefighter. Returned to Holtville as Fire Chief, and then moved on to LA area, uh, Hermosa Beach as Fire Chief, and then to Marietta as Deputy Chief, and then Fire Chief. So moved around a little bit, um, but is, is, uh, allowed me to become experienced, as you said. Um, and, uh, so I hope to bring that and, and what I'm, uh, learning from Chief Flores and and the, the crews here and the, and the team here, uh, about the issues that we have that we're facing and, and, uh, work together to set our priorities and tackle things little at a time. Um, the saying is, how do you eat an elephant? Just one bite at a time. So that's, that's our approach. Um, I'm glad to be here. Um, thank you for welcoming me, and, um, you'll be seeing me here, uh, regularly on, at these meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. I look forward to seeing all the great things you bring to Imperial County Fire Department, and especially within the city of Imperial.
And I do repeat, I really don't, I hope Pete wasn't calling you old, because I don't know if you realize it, we're in the same class.
Your experience too.
There's one more announcement, chief, uh.
There goes, okay. Uh, so there is a, an announcement I'd like to make, uh, I don't know if you're aware, but there is a, a tropical storm, uh, down below the tip of, uh, Bahoc, California. Uh, Tropical Storm Hillary expected to become a hurricane. Um, and then, uh, as it approaches Southern California again to become a tropical storm, um, they're estimating several inches of rain over the weekend from Saturday to Monday. Um, as you know, it doesn't take much to flood, um, in the valley. Um, and so that's a lot of rain. Uh, we're talking, um, three inches possibly. Uh, you know, maybe Um you know, maybe uh more or less one inch, uh or plus or minus an inch in either direction of the, they don't know for sure. Um we have another weather briefing tomorrow uh with uh NOAA and we had one today. Uh but we'll, as, as timeline gets closer, it becomes more definitive where they think it's gonna happen, but. All the projections say that we're gonna get a, a significant um impact from, from the storm. They're not concerned about winds, they're concerned about the precipitation. We'll keep an eye on it and, and we'll let all our partners know.
Thank you for the update, Chief. Do I have any other department announcements?
I just wanted to make a clarification uh after that question. You must be fourteen years of age for the cadet program and be in ninth grade. And uh the program goes all the way up to twenty-one.
Any other reports? Moving on to D two, city manager reports.
Uh yes, um I would like to join the council in welcoming uh Chief Lancer. I won't make a comment about age because aside from the fact that the city attorney wouldn't like it. From uh, but from where I s- I said, everybody is young. You're gonna be seeing new, new faces. We see a new face tonight in Chief Lancer and, and new police officers. Uh you're gonna see some new faces in city hall soon. Uh and, and so uh, uh we look forward, we look forward uh, uh to that. And so that's, that's all I had to report. Thank you.
Um mayor and council member reports, item D three, does anybody?
No, I appreciated meeting the police o- officers this evening and Chief Lancer. Um I look forward to meeting the new city employees um. If they want to come by and say hi at our city council meetings, that would be great. But no, I don't have anything else to report, thank you.
It was on backside.
Say thank you to staff for all the work, hard work on the Imperial luau. I was unfortunately not able to make it. But I, at one point when I was on my way to my other meeting, I, my other event, I passed it and it looked like you were guys were having fun out there. So thank you to all the staff for your, your hard work and, and providing that opportunity for entertainment to the community. And the only other thing I have is a belated happy birthday to Chief Crankshaw. Our city clerk who will be having a birthday next week. You know what, I do have one announcement. Christina probably knows this too. Um Pearl Tiger Football, they're also raising money, right?
Yeah, they have their annual drawdown dinner this Saturday.
Yep, yes. Well, there's, I'm sure tickets probably still out there.
I'm sure there is.
Okay, there's dinner on Saturday and money maybe if you win. So you can go support your tiger football.
I want to give a big thank you to our Parks and Rec department and all of their staff and all of their summer staff for all the. Great programs that they put on for all the kids throughout the summer. Um I know I personally use, utilized a lot of your guys' summer camps and all the different camps and the kids all seem to really enjoy them. Um so thank you for that and with that said, I will adjourn this meeting at seven fifty-three. P M until the next regularly scheduled meeting.